Hey Neil, guess what? You're live.
It's a show number six hundred and ninety-five.
Crap.
Eight years of your ass I put up with.
Thanks buddy.
Eight years. And you know, we started doing a lot of political stuff over the last couple of years, right? With Jimmy Panetta and senators here, mayors here, council members, supervisors.
Police chiefs.
Uh, police chiefs of all kinds and we get to shoot guns though. With the Capitola guys, you can't shoot guns with these guys.
But listen, city council might get us into the PD.
It might get you up a pocket.
Feel to shoot guns again.
But like, I wanna go surf. I don't want a parking ticket when I get out of my car or I gotta come back to my car.
We'll come back to that.
So tonight.
Yes.
Live on the All Right Ready Show, we're here with all five, four out of five.
Is that a question?
No.
Okay.
Are you guys vying for city council member? You've vying for city council member, three seats, three seats?
Five candidates.
Five.
We have four of the five.
What we should do TC, we should have musical chairs right here. Four chairs down, play some music.
Winner gets fifty extra votes.
Right? Play some music, have musical chairs. We've done that a long time. That's a fun game.
Um, by the way, we are live on Santa Cruz Waves. Thank you for everyone tuning in. Uh.
And if you have a question, if you have a question for city council member, for, for the, for these guys who are vying to be city council members, they can write them down there on Santa Cruz Waves Facebook page.
Perfect. So, uh, we have, and that's cool with you guys? If a question pops up? Okay, alright. So if you do have a question, hit us up.
By the way, this is not a grind session. We're not grinding anybody. This is, this is gonna be fun. That's, we, you know, TC, we know, we just, we do fun. We have a good time.
Well, is it preseason? Are we preseason right now for election time? Is this preseason? Are we in the middle of the game or is it preseason?
We're in the middle of the game.
It's the middle of the game for you guys? Okay Neil.
Just kick off, just kicked off.
Absentee ballots are, they're coming.
Absentee ballot, who can be absentee, who can be absent in Capitola?
About half the people do absentee ballots.
Did they really? How many absentee, how many absentee ballots you think you're gonna be?
Oh, about eighty percent.
Eighty, eighty percent?
And when you say absentee ballots, is that a mail-in ballot? So why would the rest of the country not want mail-in ballots?
Did you mail yours in yet?
You haven't got it yet.
I don't, have I got? Um, wow, that's pretty wild. Okay, so, uh, you're, we have four of the five candidates for our next, uh, election for the city council of Capitola, California. Three get seats.
Right.
Wow, okay.
They get, they get, they get to play the part. They get to have some fun.
Um, I wanna talk to the, uh, former mayor. Please introduce yourself.
Hi everyone, I'm Yvette Brooks and I am your Capital City Councilwoman. Currently, I've been serving since two thousand eighteen and I am re-running for Capitola City Council.
Is there anyone leaving the council this year? Is there someone retiring?
Yeah, so as mentioned, there are three seats open, so I'm the only incumbent running again. Sam Story, our current mayor, has decided not to run.
Okay, well, that's like a three hundred foot tall redwood tree in Capitola. Sam Story retiring? Yeah, wow, okay.
He's just seen his baby off to college and it's, it's, um, he's got, he's gotta figure that out. And then Jacques Bertrand is terming out, so something to know about Capitola is we actually do have term limits. So after being on council two times in a row, so a total of eight years, you term off and you have to leave it open for someone else. So Jacques is terming off.
And then there's one other.
And then there's one other. That would be my seat. I'm the incumbent.
Oh my goodness. Uh, okay, well, that's, uh, alright, well, that's great. Um.
I, I can interject. I mean, I'm gonna go over here at this guy right here. This handsome, tall dude, right? Handsome, tall. You are?
Alexander Peterson.
Okay, Alexander. Why the heck do you wanna get involved in political life? Why are you, why are you throwing your hat in the ring? Why are you stepping in, why are you stepping into the cement?
I get that question a lot. I think a lot of people think it's kind of a crazy thing to do, but I think, I mean, at the same time, a lot of people tell me like, we need more young people, more renters, more people that, you know, represent a big part of the population involved in, uh, local politics. I think, uh, we're kind of, we're at such an important period in Capitola and in California with the housing crisis and, you know, big disparities of wealth. There's like all these issues that are adding up. Um, so I think, you know, I'm gonna put my hat in the ring this time and see what happens and, uh, yeah, hopefully I can have a positive impact.
How old are you?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Young lad.
Yeah, you need a politics.
When I was thirty-two years old, when I was thirty-two years old, I was not lucky for politics. I was looking for, don't answer that question, Joey.
And to run for this, you have to live in Capitola. Is that, am I wrong? You do. So you're all residents of Capitola and can I ask how long you've been residents? Is that cool?
Yeah, I haven't been here for that long. It's been about two years for me, three years.
Okay, brand new, you're new.
Yeah, came from Davis.
Okay, well, welcome to Capitola. That's awesome things. Next up, Joe Clark.
You've been here forever.
Well, I started in Pleasure Point, but then I kinda migrated down to Capitola and I've been there for about thirty-five years. So grateful that I've been there for thirty-five years. It's a special place.
We'll get back to you, Joe Clark.
You know, I'm not voting him. You know why? Cause he stills a lot of my ways, man.
If you do vote for him, you might have to work and then he won't be surfing.
You have a point.
Something to think about Neil.
Hang on a second.
The whole surf community is like, vote for you.
Joe, you've been sheriff's problem for many, many, many moons. I see you at the Warriors games doing that shtick and all kinds of shtick going on. Have you, you got time for this?
That's the whole idea. Do this and less of the other stuff. So, yeah, I do have time.
Well, you're retired from, uh, from the sheriff's office, yeah.
Over thirty years with the sheriff's office. So grateful I got to work in the point most of my career. It was a great place to work. Got beat up on a little bit by the boys and, you know, heckled a little bit, but hey, they let me get away still, so.
Right.
It's a, it's a good thing. Grateful. I'm very grateful.
Good.
We'll get back. Next up?
The big guy right here.
Uh, Jerry Jensen and I've lived in Capitola since, uh, two thousand thirteen.
Nice. Alright Jerry.
And Jerry, what do you, what do you, what do you wanna stick your hat in the ring?
Why? Um, well, you know, my background comes from working in public, uh, school districts, um, also a developer and stuff like that. Uh, when it came to Capitola, I knew I wanted to be involved. I went through the Leadership Academy, uh, two years ago and, uh, with my expertise, I think in local government and stuff like that.
What's the, what is, what is the Leadership Academy? What is that?
Uh, Capitola's great. They put on Leadership Academy and candidates or people are thinking about getting into politics. You could go attend and they have a representative from city council there. They have one for every department. They bring in a superintendent from local school district and they talk about all these different departments. And so you get an overview of the whole entire city and how it operates.
So the city of Capitola actually kinda like goes out there and tries to find candidates to, to be, to be in your position, right? That's cool.
And I got it kicked off in two thousand sixteen when we weren't having enough people run.
We're not, we're not talking to you yet.
So, study, you know where it came from.
We're not stopping talking.
That was dark.
Yeah, you knocked it off over here. Hang on a second. TC, you're probably there real quickly.
Yeah.
Brandy, Brandy, what's her last name, TC?
It's Jones.
There we go. She, she wants to.
I just wanna say yay. I am a board member of Women's Council of Realtors and Capitola has been an awesome supporter for our organization to build leadership in Capitola and the county. And I love all these guys and I love everything they have to say and I cannot wait to support this group.
Yay, alright. And I heard she's also a sponsor of the show.
Yeah, she's supposed to sponsor the show. We haven't accepted her yet. We haven't accepted her in yet.
The board of directors has to vote her in, I heard.
She bought expensive wine. She bought expensive wine, which can't, which can't.
Uh, so question.
We got one left.
Oh.
Oh man, see? I knew this was gonna happen. I know, here you go. I'm glad that the lady showed up tonight. I just wanna say thank you. Actually, my eight-year-old asked if she can come cause she knows.
Can I jump in just ask a question? You've been doing this. What are the challenges? I mean, these guys have not.
Yeah.
Um, and the viewers don't know what your challenges are. You've been doing this.
Yeah.
Let us know. What are your, what are the needs and what's so tough of that job?
You know, I didn't think I was gonna have to be the mayor during a worldwide pandemic. So I would say in my four years serving, that was the biggest challenge of making decisions, um, like looking at our budget and trying to, to keep our staff, keep our police, um, continue to serve programs and fund programs that are necessary for the community while cut, cutting all deficit spending and really just trying to figure out that balance. I gotta say that's been a success of ours during council.
Cause I mean, sales tax stopped pretty much, right?
You know, the irony is we thought it was gonna be much worse. So the city just immediately stopped everything, um, in terms of, in terms of extra spending. Um, but what we did was we applied for lots of different grants and, and funded through CD, CDVG grants, our businesses, our, our kid programs, our food programs, our, um, renters, uh, supported our renters. And so we really put our heads down and, and focused on getting that kind of funding and, and meanwhile locking in, um, the union collaboration and working with our staff and just saying, hold tight, guys. We're gonna come follow up through on ensuring that you get the right raises, our police getting the right raises and, um, and doing that kind of work. So that was the hardest experience, I wanna say, in the last four years. And we're still coming out of it, but we're looking really good. I think now it's the arena numbers and looking at housing and, and seeing what works for the city.
Housing keeps coming up. I think each one of you, I should, should throw a, a two cents on housing because I swear that, I feel like that is the, the number one topic right now. Whether you're required to have housing, yeah, in Capitola, whether, whether, whether this is a mandated housing increase.
You got that camera going?
It's going perfect right now. And Facebook Live people.
I see waving it around.
No, well, by the way, I'm a pro. And so anyone watching, you can comment on how good my camera is right now. Um, okay, so what is, what's going on? Because the government's saying, we need to add housing. Capitola traffic, oh, you brought notes?
Don't mind my millions of notes. I'm kidding, take them, take them.
We don't do notes.
The state's telling us we have to provide over thirteen hundred housing units for people. And guess what? Capitola has no land. Everything's, um, been used and it's small. And, uh, so the only thing we're gonna be able to do is do the Capitola Mall and that's where we're gonna get.
Well, I wanna, let me answer the other part of your question, cause you asked me the question.
I appreciate that. We'll get back to you, Joe. And I'm curious about the mall.
It is so, there is a requirement. The state has taken local control out of our hands and have said, every city is required to build X amount. And Joe's right on, you're right, that there's thirteen hundred affordable housing units that the city of Capitola is required to build within the next twenty, Alexander, twenty years, twenty-five years, I think. Um, so we have this goal. Well, we knew this was coming. We, Kristen Peterson, who sits on Ambag, set, has said for years, this is coming, this is coming. So we just wrapped up our zoning code and we said, alright, let's look at all the areas that have been zoned for building and what we can build there. And we actually got pretty close to those numbers, including the mall project Joe's talking about. Well, we're at a standstill with the mall and we can go over that, um, in terms of what's being built. But essentially, we're required to do that. There are opportunities. Are we gonna build thirteen hundred? That's, that's, that's not realistic.
One quick question about that. That requirement, are you, are we, is Capitola gonna be penalized because we have no dirt to build?
Can you imagine every city being penalized by the state that they couldn't carry, follow through?
Certain grants, you're not gonna get.
Right, but I mean, please, I would say to all those people, please come, please come to Capitola and, and, uh, look at our empty lots.
I thought that, um, the state was going to, um, bypass the city control if we don't meet those requirements and just tell developers they can do whatever they want. If we don't come up with a realistic plan to meet those numbers, then we kind of lose the ability to choose where they go.
And not to interrupt, I apologize for it, but I just wanna say, is not the answer ADUs? Is, uh, cause I mean, good luck getting that through our county. We're currently.
Amazing ADU program. We actually have plans available to all city members who wanna build ADUs. You can go in instead of spending the money on creating your own plans. You can say, hey, city, show me those, those write-ups and you can print, it's rubber stamped, right? It's something that we're making easier in the city of Capitola to take place. So there's that. That's already happening. That's something we already adopted. And there's the, the division of, um, large homes like Jerry's. Jerry's big house that you can cut into four different sections.
Hold everything.
Here we go.
I have an ADU, so I helped the city get to that thing.
Yeah, but so, I mean, what everyone's saying here, what Joe was saying here is, is it realistic? There's plans and the city has been really proactive in looking at everything we can do. To answer your question directly, TC, yeah, if we don't do it, yeah, there's some chance.
One thing I wanna clarify, Capitola does have to build the homes. We have to plan for it, right? And the number's thirteen thirty-six. And so we gotta be very careful when we say Capitola has to build them, we, Capitola has to plan for them.
You have to approve the plans to figure out where they are?
No, they have to plan for how that development can happen inside the city.
Cause I look at the city of Capitola personally, I'm like, well, there's an empty lot next to Nob Hill and then there's not much else left over, right? You know what I'm saying?
Their projects are coming in there, you know, in a lot of different places.
And so maybe by the highway, you have to put a four-story affordable housing.
Sure. So you're, you're, you're a tenant of the mall.
The Capitola Mall? Yeah, I am. Fifteen years.
And that white elephant, what's, what's, uh, maybe we should address this with each and every, uh, member here. What do they have plans for or what their plans are for that, the white elephant being Capitola Mall?
It's the elephant in the room.
I read that the other day. You can swing a cat in there, not anybody.
No, and, and.
There's nothing going on in there.
I think, I think unfortunately, the, uh, the community doesn't know either. That I think that's part of the, a problem and maybe some of you do, but, uh, what do we envision for the mall? I mean, that's.
Can we start over here?
Yeah, sure, thanks. Um, I mean, the mall, Capitola has a great plan that they made for the mall. Um, my understanding is that there were, um, disagreements on that plan from the owners. And that the project kinda stalled after COVID. So I hope that we can really get back on that and hit the ground running to get, you know, a lot of affordable units and sort of reinvigorate the mall. Like as you guys said, it's kind of dead in there.
What do you think, Joe? What's your?
Well, I, I think it's gonna come up to the owners of the, of the mall and the people investing in the mall. So we gotta make it easy for them to, um, put housing in, um.
If you were in their shoes right now, what, if you, if you were in their shoes as the mo, owner of the Capitola Mall, what are they, what are they looking at? What are they looking at?
Like mixed use. You gotta have, um, residential over commercial.
Right.
And, uh, you know, putting in, um, like a, like a walkabout city, somewhere where you can, you know, do everything in your little, your little square.
Like Santana Row type of thing, right?
We can't Santana Row here because we're not Santana Row, but we can take a lot of the ideas that they've had.
Right.
And, and. Well, my, my thing with Santana Row is there's not like that town center, but which is, which is what the mall's kind of a hoping. And I hope as a tenant, cause I have long-term plans and relationship with the ownership of the mall. And there's a plan to have a section where the, the streets will intersect that maybe, and you all know these plans, where people can hang out and maybe there's someone playing an accordion and your kid can kick a soccer ball or something. I don't know, but I think that's needed.
We just have to come up with some really good ideas, um, you know, think out of the box.
Is the Capitola Mall in your hand, you guys' hands?
No.
It's not?
Not, it's not directly in our hands, but you know, we, we're gonna make the zoning rules and the policy and things that.
What, okay, maybe it's gonna start.
It's gonna come down to the money.
It's gonna have, what do you, what do you want there? I mean, let's go, make it short.
Yeah, well.
Cause you're getting long on your answers over here. You're getting cut off.
Well, you're asking me questions, so I'm just gonna answer. The conceptual design was already approved by city council. So it's, it's already come to council. We already proved what you're talking about to see, TC, it's what about, what you guys are talking about. It's already supposed to happen. Capitola City Council currently approves all of that housing, approves that mixed use, Joe, that you're referencing. And you're right, Joe, that there's no, there's no replicating Santana Row. But there is that community center and all of that great stuff. And you guys are spot on that the seven owners need to figure out how to work together. And that the developers who currently said, I want eight hundred housing units, they're can't, they can't make the numbers. If they can't make it work for them, they're gonna probably come back to ask for more. And that's what will be your decision on the dais of like, will you accept more than eight, eight hundred? So yes, it is your decision.
Capitola Mall has a, in, in your, you got, it's in your hand and slightly in you, even though it's not in your hand, it has a future, has a plan. Cause right now, there's just like nothing, there's three stores.
Well, there is a plan. No, there is a plan and it's actually beautiful. And, um, Merlon and Associates who own the mall, on their website, you can look at their past, uh, uh, developments that they've been involved in. They are a mall remodeling business and they've done that their entire careers. They started out with strip malls and they would remodel them and sell them. And then they started keeping them. And then they grew into buying, uh, giant malls. And a few years ago, they spent like close to a billion dollars on purchases as a privately owned company to buy malls. And so in my opinion, as a tenant of the mall, that, and I literally listened to the air conditioning vents to find out what's going on there. Um, it's cool to see that they actually have a vision and whether or not Capitola agrees with that vision or the traffic plan. Who pays for the expansion on the overpass, I think is a, maybe the biggest problem. But there's things that are gonna happen. But as a tenant in the mall, I see that vision. I see it's gonna be small, locally owned stores. Currently, each store in there is like six thousand square feet, way too big for modern retailing. And I'm only talking because I'm experienced with this. I spent fifteen years inside that building. But the new vision is great. So I hope whoever is in charge, whoever of you who could possibly be there, I hope that you will.
One thing I like to say about that mall is that I think the city, you know, as moving forward, they need to show a very proactive measure of like enticing that, you know, and they could do that by, you know, talking about permitting, permitting process, how quick the inspection get done, how fast plans get reviewed. You know, we have to, the city has to market itself that we are wanting a project. They have decisions on where they wanna spend money, what mall they wanna take on first, which mall or piece of development they want to tear later. And so being proactive in that measure as a city, the city council is, you know, we have to sell ourselves as much as the mall has to, you know, want that need.
Right.
Well, when they actually do decide, the city of Capitola will be drunk off the sales tax.
Absolutely.
And they wanna be drunk off sales tax. And currently, they're not drunk off sales tax because we have an empty building on Forty First Avenue at the main, uh, shopping hub of the county. So that, that we need. Am I breaking all your?
Talk about, talk about that next thing. Traffic, it's tra, traffic in Capitola. And, and, and let me, let me pu, put the two together, the condition of the roads in Capitola. I mean, drive, I'm driving a Suburban over there. I'm, I'm fucking avoiding the holes in this middle of the road here on Capitola Road.
Neil, I'm gonna disagree. I'm gonna disagree.
Go ahead, I love you.
I'm just gonna say right now, uh, if you want bad potholes, go to a county maintain road. I'm just, I'm gonna say it right now. Absolutely. Yeah, I think the city of Capitola actually has, I feel like, an organized maintenance department. And there's, it could be better. They all, it comes down to. Do re mi fa so la. How about we get some sales tax out of Capitola Mall? Do re mi fa so la. Let's play some potholes. Yeah, so, but, uh, um, yeah, the roads.
With the part about roads too, we, we always talk about roads, but what about accessibility, you know, sidewalks and stuff for people that are handicapped or the elders and seniors that are in here. You know, we, we always talk about the roads and the roads get, take care. We have to look at curb cuts. We have to look at all that at the same time. You know, the city has a PCI index, you know, that they use for looking at road condition and everything. And the last time that was looked at and the city council, you know, identified, you know, the five worst roads in Capitola weren't even listed on that. And I think they should be listed on it and we should, you know, as a priority, try to address those. It's all about funding, but when you have the worst road in Capitola, I think it's hard to tell the citizens at that street, sorry, you know, we don't have those funds, but we're doing other streets. So I think there's priority and input and.
I live on one of those streets. It's pretty bad.
The city manager was just talking about that at the candidate thing and he was explaining how, um, even though there are really bad roads, there's, um, it's a lot more cost efficient to repair roads that aren't the worst roads. And so that's kind of where the city is focusing its money is to maintain the roads that are currently functional because it would be such a large investment to fix up the worst roads that the good roads would turn into those bad roads. So it's kind of like, how cost effective can you be with the city budget?
Pay today or pay tomorrow?
We have to be proactive on our roads though, cause some are, are pretty bad. And, uh, you know, we inherited these bad roads and, and the county has not allowed the city to maintain some of the roads because they're putting in new sewer and water lines. So it's not always coming right back at the city, but as far as the city, we do have to make sure we take care of our roads and, you know, safety issues and congestion issues.
Can we go by one each candidate, TC? Top three, top three things that they would like?
I'm just trying to get through the comments. I haven't been paying attention right now. Yeah. Sorry folks. Wow, okay. I'm not trying, I'll, I'll find the best question, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm starting over here to my right. Top three things that's on your list that needs to be taken, that you wanna address if you get elected are?
Well, I'd say the top thing is the mall. Like that's huge. That's the city budget. That's our tax base. That's housing. Um, so that's a big thing I wanna do. Um, another thing, I think, um, increasing the infrastructure for, uh, bikes and public transportation is huge. I think there's a lot of good opportunities in Capitola for that. Um, otherwise, I think just generally supporting small businesses is something I'm passionate about. That's what I do for work and I'm also a small business owner, so.
Joe, you're up.
Okay, environment and safety. Um, environment, we, our beach is one of the dirtiest beaches in California.
You mean the beach or the ocean?
Hey, by the way, I just wanna say, we had floats on the sand.
We have floats in the sand?
So the, the problem with the water though, that down at the, down at the beach, it's not necessarily so much that our water's bad. It's, it's, it's done by all the birds.
Right.
But we have to come up with a way of getting our beach cleaner. We should not be on the worst beach in California list every year, after year after year.
Is it, is it as simple as a pool filter?
No, because it's the birds. A lot of it's the birds. But, but we, you know, we gotta come up with ideas. So that's one of the things.
A giant pool filter. I see, I see pools bigger than, I go to Vegas and these pools are freaking gigantic. It's way bigger than Silco Creek.
And then we have to worry about our safety. Our police department does a, a great job of, uh, you know, taking care of its citizens and we're lucky to have a well-trained police department, but we have to make sure they're, they're well-funded and well-trained.
Okay.
And, uh, I think working on the mall is gonna be a big issue. And then, uh, lastly.
Oh, is that a shameless plug for moonlighting as a cop training thing?
They're saying working on the mall, moping on the mall, how?
Working on the mall?
Yeah.
Oh, just by making sure we help them get all these great plans done and making it easier as far as zoning goes and just get in there and, and see it get done. I, I know with COVID, everything kinda took a step backwards.
Right.
Now we gotta take a step forward and get into it.
Top three things, top three thing would be the mall and I think the mall has to have a vision also with, um, having some sort of hotel there on the property, so we get higher TOT tax. Um, bike safety is, should be a huge concern. That should also tie into traffic and the traffic congestion that we have around the city and the village having impacted. And then we look at Forty First, if we look at putting all that development and housing on Forty First, how are we gonna address that? You know, the city just synchronized the lights right now. They're still working through that. Um, but you know, it has to be, you know, a bike sharing program. There has to be, you know, increase with transit, you know, and stuff like that. So traffic safety is another one. But, uh, I think the mall is really gonna drive a lot of these things with the, the tax revenue that we drive on.
So I would say, so I would say the, definitely the beach and keeping it clean. Um, currently, I'd like to see, uh, follow through. I've been working on with a program for, from Seattle on looking at an aeration, um, system for our.
Not that silly, Neil.
So I would love to see that follow through if I were to continue on the Wharf project. When I first was elected, I, um, worked with Mark Stone on getting two million. We're just a few weeks away from finding out if I get three point two from Jimmy Panetta, who I.
Our boy Jimmy.
Who came down here, walked with me earmarked that funny. I'd love to see that on my time being completed, since that was something I initiated. And then most definitely continuing the conversations that I'm having with the developers and all the different partners in bringing more community to the mall project. So that's working with Kaiser, that's working with Cabrillo. That's me continuing that work that I've been doing for the last four years with those partners. So those are the three things I'm focused on and, and continuing my work with.
You guys only let me say two things. I had one more. So the last thing with the, uh, uh, the trail and the train and the trail.
We're getting bar service, TC.
This is amazing.
Everybody voted, uh, for the trail and rail, which I was surprised.
Hang on.
Um, but we got, now we gotta see it through, right? So it's gonna take a long time for the rail to come through, but let's get that trail done as soon as we can. And not to leave Capitola out, current plans are now that we're not involved in a lot of the, uh, the trail part of it. We gotta make sure that we get our fair share of the trail.
The trestle, okay, is fucked, right? It's got holes in it.
Well, it's kind of a rust bucket. It reminds me of a rat rod.
Remember, it was bought, it was bought, used.
I know, they moved it there. Yeah, I know, it's amazing.
Used and put there. No, it was bought there. Who, who told us that?
Yeah, I know, it was, it was, uh.
What's his face? That guy, that guy, I, I.
But yeah, the trestle actually was shipped here and recycled over Silco Creek. And, uh, yeah, no, there's been nights back when the train ran, just by the way, there was a night, cause I, I sleep on the train tracks. And when, we actually had trains on it. There was a night about twenty years ago where one went by like at fifty miles an hour, ten o'clock at night. Some dude had to get home. The wife was calling him. He was going fifty. And I told my wife, no way is it making the bridge.
TC, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say one more, I'm gonna say one more thing, I'll shut up. Your dad, your father.
Yeah.
Okay, managed the Golden Gate Bridge for thirty something years, right? That Golden Gate Bridge look-alike should be at the, at the trestle right there, right? As something freaking amazing.
You know, I'm often, I often, I often wonder, I often wonder why it's not painted gold or something and why they don't sandblast it and take pride in the bridge. But maybe it's not Capitola's, is that, it's not Capitola's, right? You can't go up there and like wire brush that thing.
It's not Capitola?
We have two council members on the RTC right now. So we do have representation, but it's not. So, but I mean, most certainly write up the plans, TC, tell your dad to write it up and we'll send it to the RTC.
He was a right-of-way, uh, expert and he actually told me that behind my house, um, there's no way you can have a people in a train. And I'll just say one thing, uh, RT, uh, the, the rail trail, they, I got a fresh Facebook page today. And they keep bragging about some piece of, it's like fifty feet wide.
Thing around over here.
I know, well, no.
The worst fucking camera there is.
But it is, okay, and that, one question, I wanna raise a hands. Can we have a train and people walking through a Capitola?
I'm doing the camera work.
Is that possible?
I'm doing the camera shit.
Is that, is that possi, cause on the west side, the rail trail's like fifty feet wide. Capitola's corridor is like twenty feet wide. Capitol's corridor is like twenty feet wide. Raise a hand. Can we have a, can, I'm right here. Can we have, can we have a train and people back there?
Like a giant choo-choo train, like our old locomotive that used to go?
The one that proposed the electric, the Scooby Doo train they wanna go through there?
I think it's more about what's, what's our trestle gonna be able to hold and we already have Measure L that makes it not possible.
Well, you have to go, you have to go on the street.
So can it be that bomb across? No, the answer's no, legally.
We can't have the train and then think that all that bike traffic can go through town. There's gonna have to be.
We got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, 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 okay.
But there should be an alternative and I think that's our job to look at the most, most realistic alternative to alleviate traffic. And is that a train or is that Joby with the flying cars now? I mean, I'm gonna go tour their.
There's fifty percent more electric bikes than there was last year.
We just committed over a hundred thousand dollars on bettering our bike program, our bike.
I didn't get the raise of hands. Can, can Capitol have people and trains on their tracks? What do you think?
Not everywhere.
That's a hundred percent, Neil.
Not everywhere.
Yeah.
Get up there.
As the resident realtor here, I'd say the hardest part is the residents have to deal with that rail trail right on their property and they pay the property taxes. I know that is totally gonna be a problematic statement I just made, but there are a lot of beach owners and rail trail people that have Capitol property, the twenty-foot space that's gonna encroach on.
You're one of them.
Absolutely. My wife and I have ninety years in our house.
It's gonna affect all.
On the train tracks. But I don't, I don't know many people have ninety years in a house on the train tracks. And I, you know, and I don't mind the train, it's romantic. But, but, but I honestly think that we're not gonna move people on it. If you wanna move people.
Yeah, you get back, I'll go back.
Yeah, if you wanna move people, it's gonna be in electric vehicles.
Right, but I mean, right now, when I think your question was, you know, can the way it is right now in Capitol work? No, we have to think outside the box and how, how, you can't have the trestle, you can't have the people walking or using it as a trail and a train at the same time the way it is with Measure L, it's not gonna work, so it's gonna have to be consensus and like you were saying, you know, the city council's gonna have to figure out that, you know, the whole movement on the rail trail.
I don't know if it'll happen even in our lifetime, you know, it's such a gigantic project.
It'd be great to see it.
The train, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully there'll be a trail.
Yeah, trail, right. Well, there is a trail now. I walk on the train tracks all the time. My back gate, I go out there, it's beautiful. And I, and I don't wanna sound like I'm terrible human, but currently, shopping carts don't go really well down the train tracks. And so I, my question, and I've had people that are in charge of this whole thing, and I said, well, who's gonna tell the campers they can't camp on the tracks? Cause.
Well, that's, that's another.
But it's a whole different question, but I'm saying is, the new Santa Cruz homeless shelter could be the new trail. It happened in Orange County.
Capitol right here, we're talking about Capitol.
You might get any sidetracked.
You're going, now you're going.
Secret, I live on the tracks.
Capitol has a homeless population. We do.
I just understand it.
I see it every day. So it's something we're gonna have to deal with, the homeless.
And I feel like sometimes we have not prepared ourselves for that. And Joey, you bring up a great point, because I live here and I have two businesses in Capitol and I have seen an increase. And, and I feel like that that's something that as a community, we have to think about, because rents aren't going down and service wages aren't going up right now, unless you're a Starbucks union organizer. So the future is, it's gonna be harder for housing. And where's the dirt?
There's no dirt.
I, I think they should answer the homeless question. I could tell you what we're doing, I could tell you what the city's doing and some, some things that we are being proactive, because you make a good point, TC. We have to be proactive and I think that includes partnerships with, when we're seeing folks setting up camps on Forty First Avenue. I'm working with Caltrans, our police department, but also with other partners like the sheriff's department and all the other people instead of them walking by and saying, not ours. We all say, we're working together.
Officer Lee Safari does a really good job of enforcing our ordinances, thank goodness. I work for the sheriff's office, there is not enough deputies for Live Oak and we have a good number of officers in Capitol. Live Oak's bigger than Capitol.
I will absolutely agree, a hundred percent, and I feel like Capitol PD is a solid organization that has done a fantastic job of protecting our community. And I will agree with that.
And the city provides services for the homeless people, you know, and people that are in need and they, you know, the city provides money to the county, you know, for help, those services and, you know, provides them support and, you know, those support services right now are in San Antonio.
If, all of you, I'm sure are on social media, so maybe we, can we give a blast to your social media? So people who will be watching the election coming up can follow you guys?
When's the election? November?
Is it seventh usually or eighth?
Look at Joe, no, look at that.
I always laugh in. Okay, there it is, right there.
Here, but I got a gift for you guys. These are made out of Costco.
By the way, your wife over here just went, oh my God.
Recycled Costco boards is what those are made of.
Are you killing me?
No, it's recycled plastic.
Okay, Wave Storm Recycle. Let's begin.
Okay, Instagram is Peterson4Capitola with the number four. Website is www.petersen4capitola.com, spelled F O R.
Is there, I mean, you, you, you're running campaigns right now, you're making signs, you're being organized, you're trying to do stuff. Is it fundraising? Is there, are we fundraising right now or are we self, some fundraise, what?
Yeah, both, yeah, I've put in money and but fundraising is a huge part of running a campaign.
And that's, you have to document that and there's no like Saudi Arabia million dollar campaign donations.
Two hundred dollar win it, yeah, everything's talking.
City has its limits.
We just, just had to.
There's rules of that.
Submit that, yeah.
At least, at least Capitol has rules. Okay, that's cool.
See, TC, you and I should run, TC.
I wanna thank Alexander for a young man and running and doing what he's doing. I applaud.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thirty-two-year-old man, if you step into the ring, that's awesome.
It is awesome.
So you're the minnow, but you're maybe, are you the tallest? I think you're the tallest.
Probably.
We'll measure you two later, yeah. Okay, back to, back to back.
ElectJoeClark.com.
Okay, and Joe, should we do a, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And what?
We're gonna come back, last words.
To Clark?
Joe's done, we got.
His wife's here.
Jerry Jensen and Jensen4FORCapitola and it has my Instagram and everything on there and you can see what, why I'm running and what my campaign's about.
And do you have Instagram too?
Oh yeah, it's on there, you can link on to it.
Okay.
YvetteBrooks.com and thanks TC for ruining my name. It's Yvette Brooks. YvetteBrooks.com and you can endorse on my site, you can donate, TC's gonna, TC's gonna donate right now for messing up my name.
You take cash? Hang on, I put a sign in my yard for that.
Yes, you do.
I got you.
I got it in the truck for you, TC.
And I think to follow to your question just about the donation, it's, you know, Capitol is great, it has a limit, two hundred dollars per person. And so, you know, it's all about small neighborhood grassroots campaign and, you know.
Knocking on doors.
You're knocking on doors.
Does everybody trust our election process? Is that, is that?
I gotta say about that.
Yeah? All right, well, okay, so everyone, everybody's like, cool, has a hundred percent faith in our mail-in stuff, okay, that's beautiful.
I do.
You don't?
She doesn't.
Oh, yeah.
They're too chicken with it.
Yeah, no.
She's tackling from the sideline. These guys, TC, these guys are willing to put themselves in the ring for ser, to serve their community and they should be applauded, you know? Much as we, much as we, I have fun and we laugh and stuff like that, it should be applauded for what they do for their community, what they do for their community.
I think this will be well served with any one of us four.
Anybody, any, all these guys, all five candidates are trying to make their, their community better. So you know what? It's, 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 they should be commended.
I'm proud of you for all running. We live in a place that's so magical and it deserves to have, like, be in the best hands, so. I, I, yeah, I'm really proud of you guys for doing this, seriously. And it's a thankful, I, I go to city council meetings, I go to a lot. It's, yeah.
I just wanted to know that the vice mayor just texted me and said WTF, what was that, TC?
Oh, no. Well, it's a cash donation, that's what that is, that W, yeah, it's like, okay.
You fuck up, TC?
Totally, yeah. I got it.
Thanks, guys.
Last words, good night, everybody. We got it right?
Thanks, everybody.
Here's the cash donation.
There it is. All right, well, good night, everybody. Tyler Fox, Santa Cruz Ways, thanks for letting us tune in.
By the way, next Friday night, TC, it's gonna be the show of the year, the shit show of the year. It's at the Midtown Block Party where the Expendables are playing live.
Neil, did you call the cops yet?
Not yet.
You haven't called the cops yet?
There's gonna be two thousand people.
Okay, I just saw today, the Expendables put it on their social media, just so you know. If you don't know, this Friday, Midtown Block Party, SoCal Avenue, Midtown, Expendables are gonna blow that place apart. And we have an opening bid.
Bruno and Santa Cruda.
Santa Cruda, and if you have not heard or seen those guys, Santa Cruda, top notch. Good night, everybody. Hey, by the way, just go out and vote, right? Bottom line, just go out and vote. Yes, please.
Whatever you choose.
The most important thing you can ever do in your life is vote. Good night, everybody. We'll see you next week on the Off-Lift Radio Show.